Greetings. Good evening, everyone. Hello. Welcome. So glad to see you. I hope you had a great day. This is Reverend Darrell Winston. I'm so happy to have this opportunity to call this conversation. And we're holding court tonight. This is the proverbial or makeshift Times Square where makeshift makeshift Town Square, where we're coming for a conversation. The recent years, Atlanta has received a dubious distinction of being the capital of income inequality. This is a far departure from Atlanta being the promised land or this 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 story of Atlanta that we hear about where many are coming to the city to be calm. Some of them have fitted themselves well, being the place where dreams are realized and actualized. Yet, the backdrop remains a great chasm between those who have and those who have not. And so tonight, what we are contending with is the tale of two cities. And so I asked the question in the aftermath, in the wake of recent unrest in the city in the month of May into June, as we saw protests around the world. And we saw the mayor of our great city pleading with the protesters to go home. And then much was said about the Atlanta way and how it was stated that this is not what we do. And so then I asked the question, is there really still an Atlanta way? From time to memorial, we've heard that growing up here in Atlanta, being a native Atlantan, grew up here and went to Northside Sutton Middle School and Northside High School. Our generation was the first generation to help integrate the schools in the city. And so we were familiar with that, but seemingly that whole Atlanta way was falling on deaf ears, or it appears that that was not passed down to the current generation and certainly the current occupants of the city. So then I asked a series of questions. Why is it that we are, as a city, constantly ranked number one in the top listing of income inequality? And so I called eight-time Emmy nominated writer and much esteemed and exemplary veteran journalist, Maynard Eaton, for clarification, given his years of covering arguably just about every event in the city. And he answered me in a way that's true to Maynard's own unique personality. He answered me in a way that made me realize that there is great, there's a yet to be in this current Atlanta. There's still pockets of poverty in this city. Atlanta remains a powder keg. We're dealing with toxic bombs and it has become, for lack of a better word, a landmine at any point, at any point, combustion, at any point, great unrest. And so as a spiritual leader in the city, having been on the front line, dealing with poverty, dealing with any number of issues, I have had pastors and people ask me, what can we do as the faith community? And I said, one of the number one things we're going to have to deal with is this lack of affordable housing and still this pocket of poverty, this great chasm, this great guff between those who have and those who don't, between the disinheritage and the disenfranchised. And so here, I wanted Maynard to come and bring some distinguished guests, and he certainly recommend a very fine group of people who will come and share, and we're happy to have them. I'm going to call Maynard, who is going to serve as our moderator tonight, to lead us in this discussion. And I welcome our Facebook audience at the Fred Initiative. First of all, Fred, it simply means faith response to emergency disaster. And what I failed to mention is that on Juneteenth, in response to the wholesale decay, in response to all that we have seen played out, I called forth a group of pastors, civic leaders, activists, and said, we need to save our city. And so we started to save our city coalition. So right now, we want to have this conversation. We know we cannot exhaust it, cannot tell it all, but I want you all to know, I want the guests to know, the panelists to know, we need to say it like it needs to be said tonight. We need to say it again, like it needs to be said, no matter what, you're free to say it. And so then all that we don't cover tonight, there will be additional conversations and even action-oriented steps taken. And so will you now receive Maynard Eaton, who will lead us further, this great Emmy-nominated journalist? Maynard, welcome tonight. Thank you for agreeing to host, and thank you for recommending such distinguished guests and panelists to share with us tonight.
Thank you, Pastor Winston. It's a joy to be here because it's an important, very important subject. During a news conference recently, I asked the mayor about the tale of two cities, the Mecca on one hand, the home of the civil rights movement on one hand, yet the Water Boys, which we'll talk about later, the Water Boys controversy. She says, it's always been that way. It's always been a tale of two cities. It's been a perennial issue. Joining me to talk about this are some distinguished folks, so I'll tell you. How about Bill Torpe? Bill is sitting in the middle there. Bill Torpe is a distinguished columnist for the Atlanta Journal Constitution. We have Shelley Winter, a top-flight CBS radio, WSB radio talk show host and my favorite Republican friend. On that same top line is Okiba Divalo, an artist, owner of Noble Soul Art Group. You see the guitar in the back, he plays the guitar too, but most of all, he's a publisher of Young Black Entrepreneur magazine. Just below him is a top-flight young, top-flight young pastor and author, author of two books, I believe, Reverend Jared Sawyer. Hello, Jared, how are you? And then to his right is Juliana Njuku, who's a social justice advocate and the owner of Workforce Strong. Juliana, thank you. And finally, but not least of all, Kelly Jackson, who's a political advocate, but also a PR genius who owns Icon Global Media. And of course, if you all know the name Kelly, that is a former daughter-in-law of former Mayor Maynard Jackson, of course. So what about this Water Boy controversy? Water Boys, the mayor today has said is a problem, the entrepreneurial spirit has been misdirected, these kids must also be detained. Okiba, you wrote about that, you wrote a letter to the mayor about that. I think you said it's the mayor's smokescreen. Want to start us off on this conversation? Water Boys controversy?
Because it's not an issue until it makes its way to Buckhead, to Midtown, to Downtown amongst the white folks. Now, it's not, it's not a problem when it's in Cascade, when it's in Bankhead or in these other areas. So this has been a situation where now they have to do something. So now this so-called something is saying, we're going to create this entrepreneurship program without really addressing what the real issues, real issues of desperation and hunger and a lack of opportunities that Atlanta has been consistently dedicated to make it so that they do not provide these opportunities. So it's just no more than a smokescreen to get the kids off the streets and then say, hey, we're going to go ahead and provide this entrepreneur class or camp or whatever it is that you want to provide. But the truth is, you can't even put together a decent school for these kids. So there's no way possible you're going to tell me you're going to put together an entrepreneurship camp or class for them to actually earn money without having some other parties involved in order to facilitate that.
Bill Torpe, I think you told me before the show started, you were out there reporting about this Water Boys, this Water Boy controversy, actually on the streets with them today. What did you find and what do you think about this? You're an opinion columnist. What's your opinion, sir?
Well, I'm still coming to mulling over in my head before I start writing tomorrow. It's, I'm always on the side of people taking the initiative and trying to better their circumstances. And this is business 101. They buy, they buy low, sell high, they buy a rack of 24 bottles for $5, sell them for a dollar apiece, $24, a good upside. I think what's happened is that there are just more kids out there this summer with the COVID has squashed all the summer programs. There's a lot of, a lot of kids see that it's a good way to make money, so they come out more and more. So they're, they're competing against each other for the audience of the cars and which has caused, you know, groups of 10 people trying to be on the same intersection, trying to get, make sales. Obviously, there's a lot going on these days, and I think there's just a lot of pent-up anxiety with people and, and these things blow up. And one, and one other thing you're talking about is like trying to create programs for them, which will be, I think ultimately a little bit difficult because they don't want to sit in somebody's classroom or, you know, they're not, you know, there for TED Talks or what have you. They could go out and this morning, buy something and by the evening, they have $100 in their pocket. That's a hard thing to argue against. And, you know, even if there's a crackdown, the kids are going to be out there doing it because, as we've seen before, all sorts of other crackdowns don't necessarily mean that the, that it ends. So it's, it's a tough situation, but I mean, I, I spoke with them and they said, this is a good, easy way to make money. Not easy, but they can do it, and if you can hustle, you can do it.
Shelley Winter, you have a radio show, you hear folks every weekend on your, on your WSB radio show. Today, Jim Welk, who we know with Newsmakers, a partner of mine, said, listen, these kids are selling water. They're not on the corner selling dope or selling sex or selling pistols. What are you hearing about this?
I think, first of all, you know, I applaud the young men. I've been trying to help Mark KD Boyd, his nonprofit, Helping Empower Youth. So there's a part of me that says, great, good for you, do what you have to do legally to make money. That's a wonderful thing. That's a capitalist society. As Bill said, you buy something for a low price, you sell it for a higher price, that's the American way. I think what's going on now is that these kids now, it's becoming, I don't know if many of you remember several years ago, the Atlanta City Council passed a law, an ordinance, I don't know what you call it, but they said that they banned aggressive panhandling. And aggressive panhandling was something where people who were asking for money were very aggressively going up to people and almost demanding the money. And it was borderline shakedowns and borderline, you know, being stuck up without a weapon. And so I think these, a lot of these young men are almost doing that. If you're behind a car at a light, I've seen 10 or 12 young men surround a car, you know, aggressively poke at the window, bang on the window, hit the window, knock on the window, get the person to roll down a window. That can be very intimidating. I don't care if you're black, white, I don't care what color you are or what color the kids are, that can be very intimidating if you're driving, you stop at a light and a bunch of people surrounds your car. So I think that there's a, there's a fine line between they're just trying to make money, which is what they're doing, but the way in which they're going about it. And I think everyone should be honest about that assessment. To say that it's wonderful what they're doing because they're not doing something illegal, I think is a little insulting to the kids because that, that makes it sound like the kids want to do something illegal. Clearly, they don't because they're selling water. So they don't want to do something that puts them in jeopardy of the law, but I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a fine line on how we fix this. And I'm not sure if an entrepreneurship class is, is the right way. I'm not sure that, I know for a fact, detaining them is not the right way. I mean, consider this, Mayor Bottoms and a lot of black elected officials just spent time saluting the protesters who are protesting police brutality and they want to defund the police. There's a, there's a, there's a fine line on how we fix this. Oh, I'm sorry. And so, and now you have the mayor saying, let's put these kids in the line and have them interact with the police. It's just, it's not the right move. There's something that can be done. It's not this, it's not detaining them, nor is it just saying, let's give them an entrepreneurship class to join. It's not that, it's not that easy.
Kelly, you know politics as well as anybody in the city. You, you've worked in politics, you worked in Mike Bloomberg's campaign, presidential campaign, you've been around politics all your life, and you know PR. The mayor's move was that bad politics and bad PR or conversely?
Which move that Shelley just said?
Yeah, about the Water Boys being, saying they have to crack down on the Water Boys controversy, curtailing them from selling water.
So I want to touch on something the first gentleman said and something that Bill said. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the controversy started on Nextdoor, in the Nextdoor app. And contrary to what he said about, once it got in Buckhead, there was a problem, it was in Cascade in southwest Atlanta. And there were neighbors complaining about what was going on. It became a big deal. And of course, the mayor lives in southwest Atlanta and just about every former mayor and every elected official who's black lives in southwest Atlanta. So there was a big, there was a kerfuffle on Nextdoor and it blew up. And then it's what Bill said, it's just been a confluence of events that have led these young kids to be out in the street hustling. There's no summer camp. When we got out of shelter in place, I mean, they got outside, they're hustling. I don't think it's, I believe that there should be a program in place and we should all, not blame the mayor, but we should all, if you care enough to complain about it and be loud about it, you should care enough to do something about it. I was talking about this issue last night with Tanya Williams, who, her family is the Andrew and Walter Young YMCA on Campbellton. And they do so much, excuse me, for underserved kids. Microsoft, they're giving away money to teach kids skills in technology. There is so many people giving away money now to help black folk and black youth. And it also goes back to income equality. You don't see white boys in the streets selling water. So it goes right back to income equality in, in Atlanta and the wealth gap. And, and their parents are young too. Their parents are probably, you know, paycheck to paycheck and have problems. I'll tell you a quick story. I was on Cascade at Kroger and there was a young, this was probably about two years ago, and a kid was out there and he had his hands crossed and he was mad and puffing and growling. And I said, what's wrong? I pulled over, I pulled in the Kroger park, I said, what's wrong? And I said, $20, let me buy your water for the day, go home, relax, keep your water and start over tomorrow. And his parents came later, I think I wrote an, oh yeah, I gave him a note, I gave him my name and number, and I said, if I can do anything to help him, give me a call. So his parents came, I said, oh, I gave him a note, if there's anything I can do to help y'all. I never heard from them. But if you're going to talk about it, be about it, offer solutions, they're big brothers, big sisters. I've worked with numerous programs throughout the years that actually work. I do believe putting them in entrepreneurship programs, but ones that have to do with technology and learning. I mean, everybody has a phone. You can create an app on your phone, you can create a business on your phone. So I don't dismiss that.
Absolutely.
Juliana, you're a social justice advocate or activist. Is this social injustice or is it just income inequality as Kelly has said and Okiba just mentioned, maybe the parents are unemployed? How do you look at this as a businesswoman and also for what you do at Workforce Strong?
Well, actually, ironically, I look at it from a perspective of the fact that I grew up in West Africa and we have lots of children that run up on cars that sell goods daily for their survival. And I see it more as an indication of why, or one of the reasons why there might be an income gap here in Atlanta, Georgia, where the skills gap is at, where the insecurities are latent. The children are now facing a reality, several realities. One, most of our young children have woken up to the reality that we still live in a time where their skin color is still a target. They're also exacerbated with, with the insecurity of their parents not being able to work. They're also now cocooned in a household where they're feeling the effects of everybody's insecurity. When are we going to pay rent? How are we going to pay these light bills? And we see that very clearly in third world countries. When you go and visit, you see everybody is outside of their household trying to make ends meet for that day. Now, a microcosm of that has come to Atlanta, Georgia, as an indication that something has to be done to face the fact of the matter that there's institutional structures that need to be addressed to alleviate the insecurities that exist in a city, especially a city as wealthy as this. I see more of that as an opportunity. Yes, I agree, there should be something to take the children off of the streets because of COVID and because of the fact of the matter that we're running another risk of more run-ins with the police department, more incidents that are going to happen where we're going to have to dissect who was in the right and who was in the wrong. However, I'm a big proponent of, because these children are very smart, not just throwing them in a room and saying, take this class, but actually putting them in a place where it incentivizes them to end up somewhere where they can find some security. If you're taking this class and you're going to end up working somewhere, an internship somewhere, earning a scholarship somewhere, or even your work might help pay rent or might help do something to create a sense of security, that incentivizes and makes it make sense why I'm going to give up my $100 a day and be in this camp or be in this program because it's directly connected to some sort of outcome that's going to reduce my insecurities, the reason why I'm actually out here in the first place. I mean, yes, it's a compounded effect of being, of not having summer camps and not having a place to go. I do agree with that. But for somebody who's actually lived in a country where I've seen these children exist and they all exist out there doing the best that they can to help support their families because of a new sense of insecurity. I don't have the securities of everybody else. I don't know if I'm going to come home and all our stuff is going to be on the street. I don't know if this $100 is how I'm going to feed my mom and my little brother today. You know, I mean, I feel extremely insecure and I feel like I'm a part of this family and I have to do something about it. To do something about it and to really be effective is to also pipeline this to something that gives them some sense of insecurity. What are these camps supposed at the end? What is the return of the investment? We know the return of the investment of the water. We know that's $5 to turn into $24 to turn to potential $100 in a day. What is the effect of me dropping that and going someplace and where and how is that going to alleviate my overall insecurities? These would be the things that I would be looking at programmatically because I do agree that something has to be done because we are in a very fragile time with the health conditions with COVID as well as what's happening with police brutality.
Reverend Sawyer, Jared, you're the youngest on this group, that's for sure, and you're a pastor and also an author. How do you see it? What are you hearing from almost your contemporaries or those a little younger than you? What's, what's the word in the church and in the street? Because you travel a lot. What are you hearing?
Yeah, you know, we're, we're definitely, can you all hear me? Okay, perfect. So we're, we're definitely not being honest and being transparent about Atlanta being a city that like you and Apostle Winston mentioned at the beginning, has embedded the nature of being the haves and the have-nots. We all saw that article today within the AJC that said that, you know, the city of Atlanta is now, has returned $1.3 million in federal grant money that it felt on job training programs over the course of two years, a long period of time for there to be such negligence. Atlanta was too developed as a city for there to be such negligence. And so here it is, you know, the Workforce Development Agency said, you know, that they have a long history of financial mismanagement and poor record-keeping. That's what the spokesperson for the city of Atlanta said in that article. But, you know, we're, we're again not being very, we're not being very honest. You know, back in 2016, the AJC reported that it had to pay a $1.86 million settlement to the US Departments of Justice and Labor after a 2014 investigation showing that the agency gave grants to businesses with workers who did not even exist and conducted minimal training or none at all. So there's a lot of blame to go around. There's blame that exists in the executive branch within this city because they're, they're the ones that are giving the money out of tax dollars or grant money given by the federal government and they're not being responsible with the money that's being given. There's blame given to employers within the city of Atlanta, not having the innate desire grammatically to embrace youth of who are African-American and, and opening up their doors and creating a, a larger workforce of young people between the ages of 16 years old and let's say 25 years old. Shelley made a good point, young people want to be put to work and that's what it comes down to. You know, it's not enough just to say, hey, at least they're not in jail or at least they're not out there selling dope or at least they're not out there doing this or doing that. That's not the first thing that comes to, to their minds. And so, you know, every, every black person in this city, specifically young people in the city of Atlanta, does not feel like Atlanta is the black Mecca that it is supposedly branded to be, you know? Here it is, in 1974, Atlanta became the first major southern city to elect an African-American mayor. And so because of that and the fact that since 1974, every mayor has been African-American and mostly graduated of HBCUs, we feel as though it's the black Mecca. Or how in 1983, the Atlanta Magazine said that Atlanta's reputation as a black Mecca was deserved because it's true, because the metro Atlanta area now has the highest proportion of middle-income African-Americans of any city in the country. But young people in this city don't feel that way. In 2018, Forbes Magazine ranked Atlanta tied for the city in the United States along with DC for where African-Americans are doing the best economically. But if you ask a young person in Bankhead if they find that to be a reflective statement or a statement reflective of their situation and where they feel is they're heading as a young person in this city, they're not going to agree. Or how in 2019, USA Today named Atlanta the nation's black tech capital and that Atlanta attracts the most black professionals in the tech industry. But if you ask a young person who's in a, who's in a, who's in an area where they are included in that have-nots within the city of Atlanta, they're not going to see that as their testimony, as their story and being able to attest to that attraction to, to resources. And so Atlanta may be the black Mecca for black film, it may be the black Mecca for entertainment, but Atlanta is not black Mecca for young people and progressive folks who are trying to move from here to there. And, 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 you know, we sometimes will disguise the fact that, like you said, that this is a, this is a tale of two cities that has a lot to do with racism. Yes, racism is real, but we're, because, you know, but we're living in a world where we have put race at the forefront because we're all forced to be racial. Racism, you know, on the other hand, is definitely real, but the root of racism situation like the city of Atlanta is the lack of accountability within capitalism and how we're holding corporations in this city accountable, how we're holding political leaders who've been able to rise off of the backs of legacy leaders like your John Lewis's and C.T. Vivian's who both passed, and how we've not held them accountable to their influence as they and how we've not held them accountable to their influence as they're mobilizing in respective cities around this country. And so um, young people feel as though there is much more to be done, but it starts with being very honest and being very transparent and having conversations like this um as often as possible that can lead to accountability, that can lead to uh an investigation into corruption that's obvious and um that will lead to making leaders uh in Atlanta be true to their heritage, their roots and the interconnected uh interconnectedness among all generations that exist and uh socioeconomic statuses that exist within the city of Atlanta.
Wow, very well said.
Can I ask, what, when he said, can I ask something? When he said corruption, that's obvious. What is that? What is he, Jared, what are you referring to? Because that's the first time you brought that up in your.
I'm referring to the fact that one oh, I'm 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 referring to the fact that one point three million dollars in federal grant money was failed to be spent. And then in addition to that, us seeing years four years ago, the city, you know, paying uh almost two million dollar settlement to the Department of Justice after it was investigated that the agency was giving grants to businesses with workers who did not exist and conducted very minimal training or none at all. How does that happen? You know, it's 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 one thing for situation one, which would be them not using the money, you know, at all to uh over the course of two years. And then it's another thing for you to know that two years ago, you just got out of a uh out of a lawsuit from the US Department of Justice um for giving grant money to businesses who didn't even have uh workers. You know, how does that happen in a city that is so big and so developed and where there's such checks and balances and the right folks have been put in place? That the 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 only um uh uh a room for that would be people knowing what's up and uh just not uh being honest about it or not being checked on.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Jared.
Let me speak to something also, Maynard. When we say that the that the young people don't want to sit in the class, then we paint it with a broad brush. There are some of them who have a very high knack for technology, even as Kelly mentioned, the access to the small uh phone. Right now, there's a major revolution going on around the world. We're in the middle of something uh where blockchain technology, and that's because the majority of people in the world have cell phones but not bank account. The Brookings Institute uh did a blistering report, several on the city of Atlanta. And the most recent article, they featured a gentleman by the name of Rodney Sampson, who has the Operation Hub. And what he's been doing with youth mirrors a lot of what I'm, again, those of us who grew up in Atlanta. We do have a, for instance, when youth were a priority in the city. Perhaps you all may remember the Cedar Program. And there were any number of them developed under uh Maynard and even carried out by his successors. And I'm sure that there are others, but we have too much, too many resources in the city not to to create programs that would suit any number of our youth. Some may not sit in the classroom or do want to do TED Talks, but some of them are. And even when you consider how the food trucks emerge and all of these uh different businesses, entrepreneur type uh development business incubators around the country, we have the ability uh to tackle this head on. And I hope that even as those who are listening tonight on Facebook, and we welcome you to chime in so you can send your questions. But I just wanted to address that because I have spoken to some of them and asked, why are you here? But let me just say, we should never, now, let me just say, growing up here, I too uh could have I didn't do, I wasn't a water boy, but I went to the gas station asking if I could pump your gas. Or we had lawnmowers riding going around our neighborhood in Adamsville. Ms. Jones, can I cut your grass? Some of us had paper routes, but there was a time when uh it was encouraged in terms of uh youth and entrepreneurship, but I'm I am concerned about the budget and how much is being allocated toward the youth in this city. And maybe somebody can speak to that also. How is it that uh we have such little left when it comes to allocating resource just toward the youth?
Because we gave tax breaks to all the developers.
Wow.
Good point. Good point. That's a good point.
And then we gave the tax breaks to developers to buy mixed use, to build mixed use multi-income projects, only to now ten years later scream, we're number one in income inequality. It was set up to be that way. It was built to be that way. When you tell someone, I'll give you a tax break to build an apartment complex, and then you say, but you have to make ten percent of the apartments below market for poor people and then ninety percent market based, then you have an apartment complex that's by definition and legislated to be income income inequality. So the whole city was built on the idea of having poor people to work the jobs within the city of Atlanta and sell a development to rich people to buy two hundred and fifty plus condos on the very land that you had projects on, that you hired Renee Glover to knock down, disperse the people to the Four Winds, build the condos at a hun- half a million dollars apiece, put two or three at the bottom at below market. And then now twenty years later, everyone's like, oh, my God, look at all the income inequality. It's time and time again, this is what happens. We jump on board these ideas when they happen. When she came up with that idea and she's a a innovator with the mixed income, she's a legendary figure in development circles for that idea of moose, mixed income, multi-use development. That is something that's planned in urban communities all around the country. And we go for it because some social scientist puts out a study that says if you put poor kids with middle-class, working-class kids, the poor kids will perform better, which we know that doesn't work. In reality, the middle-class kids start acting like the poor kids act. And so this is what's happened. And and so everything we're saying about the water boys is really the Atlanta way. The Atlanta way is to keep poor people here to be workers for the rich people coming in.
Anybody else want to show? Bill, what do you think? Again, you've been covering this town for thirty years. Bill, what's your assessment of this from behind that journalistic pen?
Well, the uh the idea of it was to uh that there was a concentration of poverty, you know, that uh I mean, and I come from Chicago where it really was concentrated, seventeen-story towers uh all over the place. And the idea was to break up that concentration. In essence, you've dispersed poverty, though, and and it's actually made it harder uh on on some people because now they're away from martyr routes, they're away, you know, they're they have to get a power to get into the jobs that Shelley was talking about, the uh, you know, before they used to live near them. So it's it's, in theory, a lot of it was possibly a good idea, but and 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 also a lot of the um places that have been built that now uh the apartments are, you know, sixteen hundred dollars for a one bedroom in those, you know, four-story monstrosities that they're building all over the place. And those have squeezed out a lot of people. And, you know, there there is a niche for uh a low and a moderate income, but it is just a niche where there used to be a lot more. So I I think they've they've fallen down on the whole idea of the of the belt line being this uh a pathway that would connect us all. It's something that has driven people out. And um it's uh, you know, I mean, we just continually see that happening. Maybe there'll be a pause now that there's been this pandemic and that there's been a large conversation unrest about things, you know, maybe that there there'll be a recalibration of of how the city wants to do things going forward.
If we talk about the Tale of Two Cities, I'd like to throw this out here. Is it a tale of a black Atlanta and a white Atlanta? Or is it a tale of the black elite and black power brokers and black corporate corporate leaders have failed black folk?
I think when you look at, when you look at like the reality of Atlanta, in which um this is a wonderful platform, but unfortunately, a lot of people don't know the amount of work that's been done off the cameras where it's not photo op. So by the time I say something, I've already done it and I've done it at a high level. So if you take a second and put my name in Google, you'll get up to speed with those who question where I'm coming from and what my intentions are. So when you look at the whole, like, you can do well in Atlanta if you play the Atlanta game, which is the Atlanta way, which is not really getting anything done. So you have to be light enough, um connected enough in order to get certain things done in this city. But when it's about the community, how is it possible for Atlanta as a whole to have as many educated black peoples as as we have? But we can't string together not one decent school system for these black kids in these schools. How is that possible? Somebody, anybody tell me that. Because the thing that's going to work against you, your opinion, is the reality of my receipts. And I'm gonna say that one more time. On the other side of your opinion is going to be the reality of my receipts. So there is no possible way for Atlanta to have so many educated, connected black people and still fail black people in every sector. Government, um churches, the arts community, education from top to bottom, from top to bottom. If I'm wrong, I'll point it out, point it out, but I'm out here in these streets. I've done the work. I do the work with my own kitchen table money, not not a paycheck, not a government stipend or what have you. I do this with my kitchen table money. So if you're gonna question me, pop my name in Google and get up to speed before you do. And I I welcome that for everybody.
Juliana, would you you want to say something?
Yes. One of the things I I think, and I appreciate what everybody's saying because that's as somebody who's lived in different cities and also done international development, I'm amazed by how much stuff is that happens overseas is happening here. But my only two cents to the to the conversation is I don't ever see, from my opinion, any strategy that's really a strategy that's that's centered or beginning with what success looks like. What is a successful Atlanta for our youth, for our business communities, for our small businesses? And then the right people being put in place to execute that strategy. Everything seems to be happening since I've lived here in pockets, circles. And that's the disconnect. And maybe that's the centerpiece of the two cities is that if you're in a particular circle of people, then you get a voice, you get to have an opinion. But the circle always usually has the same ten people in it. And if you're not, you could have any kind of a cure and you're not going to get heard because you're not going to meet the checklist that puts you in a position around the decision makers or even around where the money is. You see all the money that's in Atlanta is amazing. It's astronomical. They have money, surplus money in affordable housing. There's surplus money in training. There's surplus, not just the originating budget. But whenever I ask, okay, the money is there, the people are willing, what is the strategy to connect those two dots together so you can actually have success? Who is defining what a successful Atlanta, what it's a successful black business in Atlanta is supposed to look like? What are youth are supposed to look like in the next ten to fifteen years? And I don't see that. I never see clear leadership on that. I just see pockets of ideas by people that control the power to do something and then a whole bunch of people outside that circle being very upset about it, but knowing that they are not allowed to penetrate the circles of power that exists in this city. And I've lived in DC. So in Washington DC and to Atlanta as far as two major black cities. And I've worked for the city of Baltimore. It is starkly different when uh a social problem or economic justice problem is coming to play. It begins with asking that question, what does success look like? Then putting together the right strategy, the right team members so that we can actually meet those indicators and actually be able to celebrate something that is tangible, utilizing the money that is available. Those things I've never seen really systematically happen for as long as I've been here consulting or or reading about Atlanta. And I think that that's one of the saddest things. That's that's the a part of the gulf or the drift in the Tale of Two Cities.
Pastor Winston, thank you. Good insight. Pastor Winston, uh you told me a couple of weeks ago.
Hey, Maynard, Maynard. You had asked a question. You asked, was it color or class essentially? I think, and I want to answer that. It it's clearly class. It is, it's not race, it's class. You you need a a working-class base in a growing international city to do the jobs. And you also need them to keep the power structure in an in elected positions to keep that um going. So it's a class issue. There are people who are taking advantage of other people for their own benefit. And that happens all around the world, in every municipality, in every state, every federal government, the federal level, state level and local election, a local level. So i- it's a class issue of greedy people taking advantage of working poor people in order to maintain their power and privilege.
So color is not complicit at all, you think?
Not at all. It it it, black people are taking advantage of black people, white people are taking advantage of white people. I mean, it's it's, I think it's class. Let me put it this way. It could be race, but I think if we focus on a class issue, you fix it faster than if you fix uh focus on a race issue. Because if you focus on a race issue, you're only arguing with another group of black people, uh arguing with another group of black people.
Pastor Winston, you told me a couple of weeks ago that uh, as you well know, the black church is powerful in Atlanta. But you told me there are two types of preachers, the pulpit preacher and a prophetic preacher. But haven't the pulpit preachers had a hold on black Atlanta for decades?
Well, it boils down to, it boils down to our theology. If we if we are steeped in the religion about Jesus or the religion of Jesus, if the religion about Jesus puts everything on Jesus as if Jesus is the cosmic bellhop, cosmic Santa Claus, who has nothing to do but get us, fetch us, go by, send them. But the religion of Jesus says, I must have a boldness beyond the benediction. And so the prophetic edge in the tradition of Dr. Martin Luther King, Ralph Abner, the Hosea Williams, James Orange, John Lewis and many of them, uh and even Fannie Lou Hamer and others, Rabbi Joshua Heschel, the prophetic edge, a boldness beyond the benediction. While there are some pastors who are priestly, they will stay in the church and pray and then teach when they come. While every pastor may not have a prophetic edge, that pastor should have someone in his church or in her church who does. I recognize that many times when people ask the question, where it, where are the pastors? Where 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 is the church? They are looking for personality. Because many instances, we become a personality cult. We think that just because uh certain pastors, especially in this day and time where there is a, there is a uh a a notable difference in uh the leadership in the faith community, we have allowed, we have allowed consumerism and uh mass marketed, uh we merchandise Christianity to the extent to where uh we think that God is the product. So uh it's so much uh that could be said, but I'm 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 encouraged because a lot of the younger preacher have the mantle, have a boldness, have a burden for the least of these and who have a a a sense of urgency to uh move beyond just as Dr. King said, a high blood pressure of creed with an anemic of deeds, but who say we must do something and well, and we must move beyond and do greater works. Because greater works than these is what Jesus said.
Let's uh, everybody have, we only have a few minutes left, but I want to have everyone have a at least a closing comment of why we're here and what we're doing. Jared, we're gonna start with you and go around the circle, okay? Your closing comment, Jared?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think this is a very important conversation for us to uh have, but for us to continue to have and with the right people continually. You know, A- Atlanta has a very well, because you you asked earlier if 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 Atlanta, if this is a class issue, if this is a race, uh this is a race issue, and it could be both. Because Atlanta has a very well organized black upper class. It exerts its power in politics, in business, in academia. And historically, as Apostle Winston mentioned, in the religious arena, this is the mega church capital of the country. And it's time for us to 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 have um more honest conversations um about this and about what and about what it will actually take for Atlanta to live up to its brand of the Black Mecca, the real Black Mecca for all people, not just the Black Mecca for film, um, not just the Black Mecca for, uh, business as it benefits corporate America or corporate Atlanta, not just the Black Mecca as it benefits, uh, the political arena that funnels through, uh, federalism, not just the Black, uh, Mecca that benefits, uh, the, the, the religious arena, but the Black Mecca that, um, embraces the beloved community that Dr. King talked about, um, 50, 60 years ago.
Juliana, can you give us something quick, please? Closing comment?
Oh, oh, yes. Thank you so much. This has been an amazing, um, conversation. I agree that this has to continue on for us to be able to get to some point of a solution or some port of a strategy. Um, for Atlanta to be all that it's purported to be, it requires it coming together and bridging, um, the upper class with the working class, a- as well, to be the real city of upliftment that it can be. It has all the trappings. And I don't want people watching this to feel discouraged because Atlanta does have all the pieces to be anything that it wants to be and to lead and be a trailblazing, uh, black city, um, as it's always has been in the past. And I want everybody to be encouraged in that and to continue to knock on the doors, continue to have the conversations, continue to put forth the recommendations, continue to strategize in the best interest for our generations and the generations that are coming behind us. I think it's very important. I think that's the legacy of the leaders that have come out of Atlanta, Georgia, and I hope to see more leaders coming out of the Black Lives Matter movement. I want to see more young leaders taking the stage until we finally get what we want, but we're not gonna get what we want if we're not willing to ask for it.
Kelly Jackson, your closing thoughts, please. You know Atlanta's well as anyone?
Right. So, um, I think a lot of things were thrown out, a lot of ideas, a lot of positions, suppositions, assumptions, aspersions were cast. And we didn't get to unpack any of them. And we didn't define, uh, what the tale of the two cities, what are the two cities? We didn't define it. We did not define Black Mecca. Um, corruption was thrown out, light skin, dark skin was thrown out. Shelley said all kinds of things. We did not, but do you see what I'm saying? We were not one place so that we could have this conversation. We talked about water boys and entrepreneurship and the tech sector. And even just to, uh, oversimplify and say we're gonna put kids in a class, that's not what we're saying. Because if you've ever been in any of these, um, startup kind of workshops for youth, they're very interactive, they're fun, you can literally start a business while you're in class. I did it at Stellman, I did it with the Chubb Foundation, where the Chubb Foundation did it. Um, there are a lot of organizations. Uh, Darryl, you mentioned, uh, Rodney Sampson, he does things. So I just think, I, 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 I think that we as black people in Atlanta, our voice is too diffuse. And one reason we can say that, to answer her question about, um, like what she was talking about, who is the leader, what, what are we following? What is the strategy? I don't know a city where that has happened, so I would like to know a good example of a municipality or a city where there was this great leader and everybody did it and everybody got paid. I, so I want to know what that was. But if you look at the mayor's race in 2017, there were a lot of peers who ran for mayor that all thought they deserved this shot, or it was their turn or whatever. So I think the voice is diffuse in the community. I think because of systemic racism, we're still climbing. I think the Black Mecca is a fantasy. Um, we have, uh, the, the Atlanta way wasn't defined, and I've worked with Andrew Young, I've known the family forever, but having worked with the Andrew Young Foundation, Andrew Young coined the term, the Atlanta way. The Atlanta way is and was, and there's a documentary he did on it too. The Atlanta way is, black people have the vote, we can elect people, white people have the money. They've always had it, sis, historically. So he said, if we can find a way to come together, to build things together, um, then we can build this better Atlanta. So, and that even goes back to Dr. King, when he, when, uh, I think it was Coca-Cola, they wouldn't have a dinner for Martin Luther King when he won the Nobel Peace Prize. Uh, they went to the Coca-Cola, Coca-Cola said, look, they told the business community, look, we are gonna do this, we're gonna honor this man, you all need to show up. And they showed up. And I think that's, that's an example, an early example of what the Atlanta way is. Um, we are still, we're, we're not, we, we've kind of gone backwards. I think people got a little happy. It's just like, um, just because we had a black president doesn't mean racism is over. Just because we have a black mayor and all these, uh, black elected mayors, racism isn't over. And, um, it, it's still a problem. And so there, that the Black Mecca, I think, was a, um, a tale that was told across the country and people moved here and they couldn't build buildings or couldn't find a job. There you have it. So there's so much to be said, but I'll leave it with that.
Well, there's, there's a lot more to be said. But again, I'd like you all to have some closing comments before we go. And of course, we'll end up with Pastor Winston. Um, and since we have many other folks, I'm not gonna weigh in, so I just listen to it and write about it. But Shelley, your closing thoughts, please? I, I just want to say that, look, yeah, um, uh, I just want to say that it's easy, this problem isn't going anywhere. Um, and it was built into the system. Like I said earlier, when you incent a developer to build a house or a building or an apartment complex, and you make them put lower-income apartments avail, make lower-income apartments available and make all the other apartments market level, you're gonna have income inequality. It's just, you designed it that way. So the, the issue is, I think going forward, since Kelly, you know, said, what do we do? The issue is going forward, how do we move the people that are in that lower economic, um, strata? How do we put them in positions to move them forward and not keep them locked into those positions? Um, I think that's what we need to be doing. And I think that's, that's why I vote the way I vote, because that other side of my options, uh, political options allows for that movement to happen. Um, and I think that's the only thing we can do. The water boys isn't a perfect example of this. The water boys are men, young men who want to make money to put food on their tables or put in their pockets, whatever. They're buying something low, doing it for a higher price, it's getting out of hand, the answer's not to lock them up. That would be the Atlanta way. The way of Shelley Winter and Mark Katie Boyd and others is to teach these men how to do it and do it correctly. Um, and so that's what, that's what I see. And that's what I see as the fix. You want my final word? My final word is income inequality is never gonna go away because you've built it into the system and you built it into the system on purpose. So let's not try and have this outrage now, 20 years later, when you knew what you were designing and why you were designing it. Oh, I can be heard on WSB with my show, Word on the Street, Malani Kai, Shelley Winter, Scotty B. and DJ Crystal every Saturday and Sunday nights at 9:00 PM. And this Thursday, we're on at 8 to 11 for the Carafon, so please call in and give. You're sales, though. We knew he was gonna put, get that in there, that's for sure. Bill?
I mean, can I just say, Shelley had me. He was really good. I agree with everything he said, until he said, that is why I vote the way I vote. Shelley, you're a Republican. Since when?
You know that. And that's a whole nother show. That's a whole nother show.
That's a whole nother, that's what I'm saying. It's a whole nother show.
I, I said that simply to let you all know, I said that simply to let you all know that for the last 40 years, you voted for all Democrats, and now you're having a panel discussion on Facebook Live about income inequality. I was just trying to point that out. Thanks a lot. Appreciate you.
No, locally, locally, they're Republicans. Okay, locally. It's a red state.
Bill, what do you have to say?
Well, uh, Atlanta is a place, um, that does have a vibe. Uh, and I came here for two years, uh, 30 years ago. And actually, like a month after I got here, they announced that the Olympics were coming. And it was just, I was just kind of caught up in the can-do feeling of, of Atlanta. I mean, they just pulled, grabbed it out of the hat at, at that time. Part of it was based on, uh, uh, a story that they sold, maybe not of all of it was true, but they were able to sell it. And, and that is the thing about Atlanta. It's a place, uh, the only reason it's here is because a couple of tracks came across each other and people decided, hey, we could probably make some money here. Uh, so i- i- it's a, uh, economic-based place and it brings people from all over the place. I mean, the friends I have here are from Cleveland, Boston, uh, Seattle, all, just all over the place. And it's not like that in a lot of other cities. And so that's some of the things that Atlanta have going for it. There's a lot of energy, a lot of new ideas, a lot of different people. Uh, maybe they're not here all for the most altruist, altruistic reasons, but I, I, I think that's a good base to build on is, is the energy of the city, the vibe of the city, the story of the city, uh, you know, even, you know, the, 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 the place where you can come and make it. Uh, and I think that we just need to try to, uh, find our way back to that, uh, ideal, um, and somehow find some leadership that'll, uh, forge those, uh, questions into clear, uh, rallying points.
Okiva, Okiva, you, the next to the last word, sir.
Okay. So one of the things that I definitely want to say is this. In order for Atlanta to move forward, it's gonna have to become transparent and honest in a way that Atlanta has grown so unaccustomed to being. And what I mean by that is that these are children. So there's a level of detachment that everybody on this panel has, and so many people in Facebook and all, and social media and all these other places. These are children as young as five or none. Children who are not eating, who have a failed school system, who have failed leadership within their neighborhoods, who, who have to dodge, y'all, y'all talking about dodging cars. These kids gotta dodge hunger, they gotta dodge bullets, they gotta dodge gang activity, they gotta dodge so much, so much. And there's a level of detachment from Atlanta's leadership and these privileged groups who want to think that it's all so easy just to put somebody in the classroom. Who's paying them while they're sitting in these classrooms? These kids are being abused at home. There's a whole bunch of other things that's going on that unfortunately, a lot of people are so detached from. So in order for Atlanta to really get on point, Atlanta's gonna have to learn how to be honest in a whole different way. Because I promise you, mark my words, y'all think this last situation over at, at that Wendy's was a problem? You think that was a problem? Keep starving this group. Keep starving these kids, their parents, their uncles, their aunts. They will burn the city to the ground. And I'm gonna say what's honest. I'm not gonna say what's popular. They will burn this city to the ground. If y'all don't get off your high horses about the reality of these kids being hungry. That's the reality.
Well, sir. Pastor Winston, you were there at Wendy's, and you said something to that next year.
Yeah, and I agree. I, I, I agree somewhat with what, uh, Kiba said. Uh, we have a high mandate to do something, moral obligation. Uh, there are those who have not been heard, and Atlanta will burn again. We need to be, uh, working and strategizing a whole different way. We gotta have a radical departure from what we think we know. Uh, there's gonna have to be, uh, new voices and new, that we're gonna have to make room for those who, who, who have the answers, because there's an, we gotta, there's an answer to the groan. Scripture says, creation is groaning and urn is expectation waiting. There's a, there's a remnant in this city that's been already waiting their turn. And some of them are going to be the replacements. And I'm gonna say this, um, there are some people who, uh, will never be heard from again. They're, they're already been positioned and processed out. And I'm saying this as a faith leader, uh, the spiritual climate in this nation is such to where there's got to be something better. It's got to be something new. And if we're able to interpret what's happening in the recent months, then we know then. Historically, whenever we got right here, there had to be a move. And I believe that the revolution, as Jill Scott said, won't be televised, but it's gonna be digitized. And I believe it's going to be, Atlanta's gonna be a major, uh, launching path for something that's gonna impact the world. But I agree, uh, we have to work through and we gotta continue to work on. Uh, there's so much that needs to be said and done. But I'm committed, uh, with the Save Our City Coalition, uh, to affirm and celebrate the uniqueness of all. And I know too, that, um, even as we depart, there will be those who will gather again. But I'm tired of meeting just to meet, which is why I wanted to have this conversation. And we will do everything we can to continue to move forward. Thank you all for being on. Thank you all. And, uh, I wish we had more time.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Maynard, for agreeing to moderate.
Thank you. Thank you. See you next time.